This meeting has come to order. The day is Tuesday, April 25th, 2017. This is a voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Do you have any introductions there?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. Our invocation today will be by Father Jeffrey Frey of the St. George Orthodox Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Lozelle. Apparently, the Father didn't make it, so we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Ober.
Here.
Mayor Portem Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilwoman Sisko.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
City manager, do you have any announcements?
No, sir.
Thank you. We have basically two meetings today. First is a voting meeting, and then we'll adjourn and go into a special meeting right after that. I want to thank everybody for coming today. I don't think this is going to be a real lengthy schedule, but we'd like to get started. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda item A: Approval of minutes for the city council meetings held on April 11th, 2017. Item B: Approval to permit temporary rock-crushing activities within the Lakeview Plaza subdivision for a duration of 60 days. And Mayor and council, on the motion for that item, it said 60 days until June 2nd. It should say June 25th, 2017. So if that's okay, I'll make that correction. And then item C: Approval of amendment number one to city contract number 2016-008A1 with Shepherd West Nitzer Incorporated for engineering services for additional storm drain design for the South Washington Avenue East Goodwin Street improvements project in amount not to exceed $72,760. Item D: Adoption of resolution number 4383-1592, providing notice of the primary and general elections to be held on August 29th, 2017, and November 7th, 2017, and authorizing the city clerk to enter into any agreements as required to provide election services for the 2017 primary, general, and special elections.
Is there any item a council person wants to pull for additional discussion? If not, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second. Yeah, motion and second vote, please.
With the correction to item B.
With the correction of the 25th.
Passes unanimously.
Move on to liquor license agenda.
Mayor and council, there are two special event liquor license applications on today's liquor license agenda. One is for a Series 15 special event liquor license for the Boys to Men Mentoring Network north central Arizona to be held at the Holiday Courtyard. And the second is the request for a Series 16W Fair Festival special event liquor license by the Mountain Artists Guild Arts and Crafts Show. And it's a wine festival. There are eight applicants that are listed on the memo. Both of these applications have been determined to be in compliance with city requirements and are being recommended for approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask.
Any questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to forward special event liquor license applications 8A1 and 8A2 to the Arizona State Liquor Board with the recommendation of approval.
Second. Yeah, motion and second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Regular agenda.
Item 9A: Consideration of a submitted petition requesting the council to adopt a resolution to endorse the U.S. Conference of Mayors Climate Protection Agreement, Resolution Number
Okay, we had a presentation on this at our last council, actually about a month ago at a council meeting. And so at this point, I'm going to ask the council if they have any comments or questions.
I do, Mayor.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
First, I'll make a comment. I know we've received quite a bit of mail, mostly email, and some postcards I see that were delivered to us today encouraging us to adopt the mayor's resolution on climate change. And I am one of those people who believes that human activity has caused some change in our climate patterns. I know there's a lot of controversy, a lot of disagreement about it, and it seems to be science versus corporate profit in my mind. And I've been a student of earth science for almost 50 years. The first class I took as a freshman in college was geology, and I've been studying it ever since. I've been reading articles about climate change and the effect of burning fossil fuels and fracking and all kinds of things that affect our natural environment, about which I care a lot. Whether you believe in long-term global climate change or not, I think two things need to be seriously considered by our council. One is that we need to take care of the environment for future generations. We may not see it happening today, but our grandchildren might feel detrimentally affected by what we're doing today. So we have a human and moral responsibility to look out for the future. And secondly, some of the things that the mayor's resolution asks us to do under the category of local action, we are already doing. And this is merely a statement that the city, as a government, is committed to continuing to do those things. Our water sense program, we're changing out light bulbs. I think we are considering fuel economy when we change out our fleet vehicles. If you go down the list, and I think the council, I hope, has read the mayor's resolution in detail and thought about all the things that we are doing, we are making a lot of progress. But this is a statement to the rest of the nation that Prescott, as a community, is committed to doing what it can do within its jurisdiction, within its authority, to contribute to keeping the climate from changing. And I know there are a lot of folks here who were here a month ago, but there are some new folks here, and I would hope that the mayor would allow public comment. I know there's a presentation, I think, prepared for that. So I personally would like to hear what you have to say.
You have other questions, comments from the council? I'll go ahead and make a few comments. First of all, I was at a mayor's conference in December, January, I'm sorry, back in Washington, DC. And our guest speaker one night was Mayor Bill de Blasio. And during his speech, he said that it was basically a call to arms, that all the mayors needed to make sure that they oppose everything that our president-elect, at that time, it was just before the actual inauguration, that all the mayors should oppose everything he's doing, particularly on immigration and on climate control. As far as he was concerned, it was important that all the mayors opposed him on anything he was doing, on many things, but those are the two that were the most important to him. It was interesting to me that we were not doing this because it was a need to protect our planet and our environment. It was because it was an opportunity to oppose our president-elect. And I will tell you that I don't agree with being any part of that kind of political nonsense. The other thing is, I've got a statement here that I'm entering into record, and it can be, I'll read a little bit of it to you. It's by Richard Lindzen, emeritus professor of atmospheric sciences at MIT. And he says, basically, there's two groups of scientists that are looking at this. One are scientists that mostly believe that recent climate change is primarily due to man's burning of fossil fuels, oil, coal, and natural gas. This releases CO2, carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, and they believe this might eventually dangerously heat the planet. Group two is made up of scientists who don't see this as an especially serious problem. This is the group I belong to, according to this professor. We're usually referred to as skeptics. We note that there have been many reasons why climate changes, the sun, clouds, ocean, orbital variations of the earth, as well as a myriad of other inputs. None of these is fully understood, and there is no evidence that CO2 emissions are the dominant factor. But actually, there is much agreement between these two groups of scientists. The following are some points of agreement. The climate is always changing, number one. Number two, CO2 is a greenhouse gas without which life on earth is not possible, but adding it to the atmosphere should lead to some warming. Atmospheric levels of CO2 have been increasing since the Little Ice Age in the 19th century. Over this period, the last two centuries, the global mean temperature has increased slightly and radically by about 1.8 degrees Fahrenheit or 1 degree Celsius, but only since the 1960s has man's greenhouse emissions been sufficient to play a role. Number five, given the complexity of science, no confident prediction about future global mean temperature or its impact can be made. The IPCC, and that's a group from United Nations International Panel of Climate Change, working group one, acknowledges in its own 2000-year report that the long-term prediction of fuel climate states is not possible. So I think, you know, as we go forward, we have to be very careful in how we look at this. You know, we had many people that sent us emails, notes, things of that nature, indicating that they felt that this was something that was going to be bordering a catastrophe in the future if we didn't do something about it. I, for one, am one that still feels that this is still open to considerable more science that has to be developed on this issue. Is there any other comments? I got one from Councilwoman Orr.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I too, like Councilwoman Wilcox, believe I'm a good steward of the environment, consider myself to be an environmentalist, have a son that makes sure that I go along those lines. However, I do not feel that we need to make any additional steps. We approved a general plan, our citizens approved a general plan in 2015 that addresses many of the issues. We have been noted as being number one for clean air in the nation by the American Lung Association. We're number 13 for the happiest and healthiest. I think that we have done, as we just heard, an amazing job with our water here in the city of Prescott. We have the night sky. There are so many things that we do in our community for our environment that I really feel that doing anything else would be redundant, and I think it's completely unnecessary. So I guess I don't, I think it's more of a political statement, and I just really would be concerned about what, and I talked to many people this weekend about this, about what kinds of regulations or requirements might come down from above because we would sign onto something like this. I really don't see any advantage to the city of Prescott.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to respond to one point. Just because one mayor in one city made this a federal election issue doesn't mean that the city of Prescott has to look at it that way. This U.S. Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement was actually presented in 2014, long before the presidential election, and our current president even decided to run for president. So I think we have to look at our community. What can we do to make a commitment for future generations? It's all right here. I don't think it's superfluous or redundant. It's a commitment. It's a statement. We belong to a country, and we have over 1,000 cities that have signed on to this agreement. It seems reasonable to me. It's nothing beyond our capacity.
Councilwoman Sisko.
Thanks, Mayor. Gene, I appreciate your stand. Billy, I understand. The shame for me is that it's become politicized. Is some of this stuff right to do? Absolutely. But the truth of the matter is, is that it all costs money. For Gene to say, oh gee, we can just pass it and smile and go down the road, I didn't see that in that piece of paper. I saw, you will do this, and you will do this. And I'll tell you what, we can't even, we can't even pay for police and fire on a consistent basis to fully fund those things. It's going to cost money, folks. You want to talk about regressive? This thing is regressive. So, you know, as much as I agree with the tenants of it, and as a person, I think it's my responsibility as a citizen to do this stuff, but I don't think it's the responsibility of the city to act as a politician and say, yeah, we'll do that, and then kind of walk away and kick the can down the road. So, you know, while I agree with some of the tenants, I can't agree with the city committee itself to this.
You have other questions, comments from the council? Okay, I'll take comments from the public. We'll take five people for two minutes. Step on up. First one. Go ahead. Whoever wants to come on up.
May I, can I address that for a moment, Mr. Mayor? Because I always wanted to. If maybe, I guess this will be my two minutes. But what I'm, what I'd like to see, since we collected, and I have comments that I think would be valuable arising out of some conversations I had with Councilwoman Orr, the radio station discussion between Stephen Cook and Councilman Blair, which I think were really a great reminder for me. But the point I want to make is, limiting comment on this issue for two minutes to five people, I've got additional signatures to those that I submitted last at the presentation. We've got a roomful of people who are interested, I think, in sharing some comments, who are your neighbors and citizens, on this issue that is important, I think, for you to hear for more than 10 minutes in order to make this decision. And the one thing that really concerns me is that you don't put that kind of limitation when a staff person or the council member puts an item on the agenda. This is one of those instances where a citizen's petition has been filed, and now it's another means within our, from our charter, for the council to address an issue. And what you're doing is treating a citizen's petition differently than anything else that comes onto the agenda. And I'm, from my view, you're disrespecting the people who live in this community. And I'd ask you to reconsider and allow them to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Gary Beverley. I own property in the city, pay taxes, have a business license, and I wanted to step up and say a few things. Number one, because de Blasio politicized this, made it a partisan political issue, is regrettable. I don't think that was called for at all. I want to point out that the conservative political side has also acted to make this a partisan political issue. Both sides are wrong. This is an issue about science. This is an issue about making good public policy judgments based on the facts. As far as the city's concerned, I want to disagree with Councilman Sisko. This wouldn't be expensive at all. And you can look to see, a great local example would be Sacred Heart Church, which is making a 10% ROI on their investment in solar photovoltaics and LED lighting and energy-efficient retrofits in their church. This is phenomenal. Much of that was financed by the company that installed it. There are some options here that I think the city hasn't explored, agreed. You've done, this, Prescott's a pretty well-run city. I think you guys should be, should be proud of that. And we, I know that, and we respect that. You can do a little better. This is something you need to look into. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
There seem to be several compelling reasons to support, support the adoption of the mayor's Climate Protection Agreement. The dire warnings of the majority of the scientific community, and I, I'm tempted to say the overwhelming majority of the scientific community, supported by objective and informed voices of people like Pope Francis, who has no political axe to grind, are trying to awaken the world to the needs of preserving and protecting our environment. Those of us, those of us who have lived in the Prescott area for many years have seen changes that have not always been respectful and protective of the beauty of our, of our world. But even from a practical point of view, the mayor's agreement economically makes good sense. The adoption of clean energy policies is a money saver. Here in Prescott, Sacred Heart Church and School have demonstrated this beyond reasonable doubt. Gene Murphy, the business manager, has developed a program which included the installation of 622 solar panels, LED lights, and other improvements that have made Sacred Heart School completely energy-independent and earned it the distinction of being the most eco-friendly school in the nation. This program has reduced the annual utility bill by two-thirds, has cut the annual carbon dioxide output by more than 200 tons.
You've got 30 seconds.
And water consumption by more than 50,000 gallons. Financially and environmentally, the mayor's agreement is a win-win plan for our future.
Thank you. Thank you, Father. Next.
I'm Steve Cook. In cooperation with Councilwoman Wilcox, I was led to believe there was possibility I could have five minutes to provide a visual component to this discussion with some slides that I've prepared. If you'll make an exemption to the two-minute limit, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Well, we did have a presentation about a month ago. It was for five minutes. I let it go to eight minutes. Are you going to give us any, any information that's different from what we got?
Specifically to address the objectives, the rows subsequent to that.
Are you going to give us any information that's different from the presentation that I was giving a month ago?
Yes, very much so.
Okay, I'll give you five minutes.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and city council. Four weeks ago, I urged you to endorse this agreement. Today, I'll address four concerns I've heard you express, and do this in the context of discussing two trends. First, I thank you and applaud the Prescott general plan. Seems endorsing the mayor's agreement logically follows from that plan, which is built on sustainability. I know at least a couple of you see it as redundant, that is endorsing this plan. Another objection that we've heard expressed pretty eloquently involved partisan political remarks made by prominent big-city mayor. Yes, these remarks are upsetting, but note, the U.S. Conference of Mayors is a nonpartisan organization. So what's this group about? The short answer is jobs, which make, which remain a big part of their mission. Trend number one is a jobs creation trend. 50 years ago, the solar energy industry did not exist. Today, solar, wind, and energy efficiency sectors employ millions of Americans. Job creation in this area is growing fast. Would you believe solar employs many more people than the much older coal industry? I was a bit skeptical when I saw this chart last week, so I sought out the source of the data. It comes from the U.S. Department of Energy study, which also reports that for electricity generation, solar employs more people than coal, oil, and gas combined, and that energy-efficient sector and solar employment are going fast. The former was predicted to have a 9% growth rate higher than any other sector. Solar, as this study suggests, as this story suggests, is growing nearly as fast. It notes corporate America is embracing sustainability, that 46% of large firms have hired additional workers to address such issues in the past two years. The world's largest employer, Walmart, is very ambitious in using solar and improving energy efficiency. As this story suggests, why? I'd say that Walmart, folks down at Sacred Heart Parish, who look to save one and a half million dollars over 25 years, and millions of Americans are predominantly driven by saving money with the types of cost-effective investments that the U.S. Mayor's Agreement promotes. Consider a third concern. Endorsing this agreement will saddle Prescott with more regulations. It won't. There's nothing in the resolution that says this. We will expect you to set up a study group of volunteer citizens to recommend possible cost-effective actions, where cost-effective implies avoiding costly and time-consuming actions, regulations. The second trend is global warming. From a baseline of roughly 50 years ago, average global temperatures have climbed nearly 1 degree Celsius. Last month, I used this slide in linking rising CO2 and average global temperatures. To those who object, I would say, okay, let's read the handwriting on the wall and consider where this trend, whatever it is, whatever its cause, may lead. Note the steadily upward trend of the last 50 years in this plot of global temperatures. Many think that greenhouse gas mitigation measures can keep temperature gauge below 2 degrees and serious climate impacts can be avoided. By the end of 2016, our planet was about 1.4 degrees above pre-industrial levels. Assuming no mitigation, we extrapolate this trend out to 20, to the year 2120, and then 2185. We see the 2-degree threshold is exceeded. Why do I pick these distant years? Well, it's not inconceivable that my own grandchildren might be alive in 2120 and their grandchildren likely in 2185. Trend two continuing signals our efforts at sustainability have failed, and I fear for them. If temperatures rise by 5 degrees, we enter the apocalyptic realm where feedbacks take over, where the continued existence of all the primitive life forms is in doubt. This is sobering. After a species' long history poor choices by this and the next generation could doom us to extinction. So let's end on a lighthearted note. Here's a cover-your-rear-in strategy for today's leaders. By showing good business sense, investing tax dollars wisely in job creating solar and energy efficiency by getting on the trend number one bandwagon, you protect yourself against future charges that you ignored. Scary possibilities raised by trend number two and did nothing.
30 seconds.
Is this resolution redundant? I think not. By endorsing it, you'll embrace nearly 900 concerned citizens who signed petitions. Show you recognize that public participation is good governance. You'll please others by promoting jobs that make sense for Arizona, and honor future generations. Thank you for valuing sustainability in managing our great city.
Thank you. You're the last one.
I'm Dean Matson. I live over on Merritt Street. Just for the people who are into sustainability and all that, well, first, let me throw in, I'm the only one who was at every single general plan meeting, so I was involved in developing that sustainability part of it. We all felt that it was a good thing. None of us thought we needed to join on with some convention of mayors or anything. My household uses less than 1,000 gallons of water a month, significantly less. We've replaced all but two light bulbs in the house with LEDs because I don't have a convenient way to replace the last two that we barely ever use. So I'm in, I'm into conserving energy. I'm into saving water. I don't water the plants outside. I do all this stuff without agreeing to the convention of mayors. My understanding is that this agreement would also commit us to supporting that the United States reduce their output to 1970 levels and support the Kyoto. United States reduce their output to 1970 levels and support the Kyoto Protocol as it required the United States to significantly reduce its carbon dioxide emissions. That costs money. A group of people getting together for a study group, guys, you can do that without this, but you're figuring if we agree to this, we have to do it. I feel that government is best which governs least, and by not committing ourselves to this agreement, we can do it all, but we're not saying that we have to. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Do I have 30 seconds?
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is John Lutz. I've been a Whiskey Row businessman for 35 years. I also graduated from NAU School of Forestry in 1978, at which I was taught the very same principles of human effects on climate change that this agreement would support, and I would urge you to support this agreement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's all we're going to take. Thank you for coming and giving us your opportunity to listen and also to provide as many emails. I can tell you, I think we probably got at least 35 to 40 emails. At least I did. I don't know about anybody else. And I think it's fairly clear that many people here today expressed a lot of what we saw in those emails. So at this point, I think we need to move on. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 4382-1591.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Apparently, the motion fails for a lack of a second. Next item.
Item B, Public Hearing for City of Prescott's Community Development Block Grant, CDPG
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Darla Eastman. I'm the Community Development Grant Administrator. And the City of Prescott receives annual funding for allocation from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for community development projects. A variety of projects are eligible for funding that primarily benefit people of low, moderate income, prevent and eliminate slum and blight, or meet other urgent community development needs relating to health and safety issues. So I'll just go over the, excuse me, I'll just go over the details of what we did this year. The 2017 application process was announced, excuse me, I've got a tickle. Nope, that's okay. Application process was announced in mid-December. Thank you. The CDPG application workshop was held January 11, 2017, which included over 27 participants. Seventeen applications were received at the February 27 deadline. The first public hearing was held March 15, a CAC meeting where applicants received opportunity to make a presentation. The CAC met again on March 22 to rank and review proposals. The second public hearing is today, while a 30-day public comment period is running simultaneously. The third public hearing, after the 30-day comment period process, will be on the May 9 public hearing for the council date. The plan must be submitted to HUD by May 15. The draft program year 2017 Annual Action Plan includes an allocation from HUD in the amount of $233,755, an additional $97,774 carryover from prior-year project funding. So what I'd like to do now is first introduce one of our CAC members, Pam Wickstrm. She's in the audience today. And I'd like to introduce to you Jerry Jones, our chairman.
Thank you. You've got something going up here. The Citizens Advisory Committee this year recommended a number of projects for the 2017 and 2018 year. And we had, on the public service part of this, we were allocated $35,000. We had a wish list from the people that wanted to get some money, and it was $134,000. And so it's a little difficult to get that $35,000 into everybody. So we came up with what we had, two that have received monies from us before, which was Meals on Wheels and New Horizons. And then we had two new ones, which one of them was People Who Care. They're also in the transportation business for the disabled and elderly. And the other one is for Arizona Sewing Works, which is a training function, which we bought a, we're buying a sewing machine for them to help them get more people into their training thing and put people into jobs. Our objective with this little bit of money here is like it is on both sections, construction and public services, to get the most bang for our buck. And we think we did. Some of the others that did, we'd like to give money to everybody, and they all need it, but we just can't do it. So if you've got any questions about that public service part, if not, I'll keep on trucking here.
Dr. Menlozell.
I just got a comment.
Okay.
Now?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Just like home. So the construction projects, with the carryover we had this year, were able to fulfill most of, all of the requests. As you all know, the Bethel development is one that we allocated the funds for, hoping that they'll get their tax credits approved by the state or whoever's going to be giving it to them, and then they can keep on going. If that fails, we'll have that $55,000 come back to apply to other projects. So with that in mind, open for discussion or questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Jerry, once again, don't tell the other committees and groups that I'm a liaison to. I thoroughly enjoy joining your group. You have a committed, dedicated group, some new members. Darla even does a good job there.
I'm just giving you a hard time, Darla. You know, the whole committee is, we jab each other and we have a good time.
Thank you.
And I will tell you that with your leadership and the input of that committee, you've scoured over a limited amount of monies and benefit groups and foundations that help people that otherwise cannot help themselves. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your all's support.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Thanks, Darla.
I move to adopt resolution number 4379-1588.
Second.
No, that's, that's another.
No, that's the next item.
That's something else.
Yeah. Okay, there's just presentation.
That was just a presentation.
That was B. We just did B, and now we're on the C.
Okay. Sorry about that, Mayor.
Yeah, no problem.
It was my turn.
Okay. Item C.
Item C, Public Hearing for the Alternative Expenditure Limit Home Rule Ballot Proposition.
Thank you, Dana. This is the second public hearing. Two weeks ago, we had the first public hearing. Were required to have these two public hearings. This is the home rule option going to the voters on the August 29 election. This item has gone to our voters seven times over the last few years, several years, and proved all those times. As part of the publicity pamphlet that will go out and that is in your packet, it shows projected revenues over the next four years, as well as an estimate of what that expenditure limit imposed by the state would be, and it shows an average of $35 million a year that the city would not be able to do in projects, in water projects, in road projects, and those type of projects if home rule does not pass. And home rule, again, is just about local control. It's about approving the expenditures as part of the public hearing process each year as part of the budget. Doesn't affect tax rate, doesn't increase tax rates or anything like that. It is just about home rule, these decisions being made locally. With that, I'd leave it to you and to the public for comment.
Questions, comments from the council?
I have one, Mayor. Mark, does this, or councillor, because this is an initiative for the city, by the city, are we allowed to use public monies to promote this, unlike a normal ballot measure?
No. We, you know, the, there's an exception for, I think, bond, bond elections in that statute that talks about the city being able to put out information on the benefits of the, you know, getting a bond approved by the voters. In this particular case, what we're providing in the, if you look in the, in the packet, there's the election pamphlet information, and that just sort of lays out the, effectively the pros and cons of it. So we try and avoid using city resources to affect the outcome of an election. Elected officials, obviously, on your own.
But like, could Mark or yourself or Michael go on Channel 13 and do an interview on this, or?
Well, as long as it's neutral and not advocacy, city staff can provide information under the statute, but remember, we also have limitations in our city code and our HR policy about the extent to which staff can participate in local elections, so it's pretty limited.
Okay.
Obviously, this is all part of, you know, staff, Mark, a particular staff's role in providing information to the council, you know, without, short of sort of advocating one way or the other.
The reason I ask is because of all the other things with the candidates and then the other measure that's on the ballot, I just wanted to make sure that this is a non, and this is, of all of them, really is necessity, and I don't know how, if we're able to separate it by a discussion from the city. That's my, the reason my question is that.
It sounds like the rules of the game are the same as it is for Proposition 443, but in terms of providing the facts, I think we can do that and will do that.
Okay.
And just to extend on that a little bit, we have, in our packet, we have the required statutory information, which is all in this packet, but we also have a Q and A that we added.
Right.
And it's very factual. It was approved by legal. It doesn't advocate one way or another. It just, it just explains factually what it is in five or six questions.
Thank you, Mark.
Councilwoman Orr.
Thank you, Mayor. I just think it's really important for the public to realize that 442 is about local control, what we can do, how we can set our own budgets here in the city. Absolutely essential that it passes. So I believe it behooves all of us sitting on the dais here who are elected officials to certainly communicate that message, and please ask that our citizens vote yes on 442. I hope I haven't violated something by saying, by using the microphone.
You're already wrapped the bank and running getaway cars.
You know what? It's pretty essential that we have local control and not have to go with a legislative budget.
Mark, maybe you just go ahead and tell the public here what happens if this fails.
Well, if it fails, we'll be limited to the state-imposed limit as adjusted and with exemptions allowed in the state constitution. And as the exhibit shows, we would not be able to spend all available monies for water projects or whatever infrastructure projects that we talked about. We talked about streets projects a little bit ago. Those type of things wouldn't be, whether to do them or not do them, wouldn't be based on is funds available. It would be based on is there room under the expenditure limit? So, you know, you would have to make decisions about what could be done. That even goes to payment, paying down the PSPRS. Without the limit, you can't pay off. In excess of that, there was a proposition this year in the legislature. I did not believe it made it through the legislature to exempt that. So it falls under that limit as well.
So this affects the whole budget, not just the general fund, operating expenditures. It affects capital projects, streets. So I think.
Yes.
So that's, that's the problem. It's not, it's not a frugality kind of measure that says you should only have so many staff people at parks and you should have, you know, close the library on Sundays. This affects streets and roads and sewer projects, and in fact, it will likely affect, you know, centralization if it doesn't, you know, of our wastewater treatment and all of these sort of significant public projects. So it is a, it is a city-wide budget impact, whether it passes or fails.
And I believe the state cap was established some time ago based on a California initiative. Can you explain that?
Sure. That's question number one on our question and answer. And it was done by voter initiative back in the 80s. It was Proposition 13 out of California, which caused it here. It set the budget limit at the 79, 80, the fiscal year 1980 levels, and it's been increased, incremented based on CPI since then. Of course, anybody who's been around Arizona since the 80s realizes the cost of producing water and the cost of doing roads is not progressing at a CPI rate. It's exponential. So that causes the problem, and it also doesn't look at changes in service levels. Back in 1980, the city was a very different place. We didn't offer many of the service levels that we do today. And again, those, there's no exemptions for those in the state law. So you would be limited.
Oh, thank you, Mark. I just wanted to make sure that the public had an opportunity to hear that because I think it's very important. Councilwoman Orr.
Yes, Mayor, I just think it would be a smart thing for us to do possibly next year when we talk about setting a legislative agenda, that we think about and to speak with maybe Senator Fan or one of our legislative delegates. I think this is a pretty antiquated system, and I don't know why the legislature does not consider removing this from something that's required of the city.
Excellent point, especially when you look at the fact that, I believe, 60 to 65 of the 90 cities in the state do this every four years. But of course, this was a citizens' initiative with a change to our constitution. So it would have to be another statewide election issue to change the constitution, which is, again, as councilors are familiar with, it's a hard sell to say we want to take out expenditure limits out of the constitution.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, you said 65 out of 100, you said?
90, I believe.
90. But there are some cities that have, what, a 10-year or 15-year or?
And this is an option that we plan to bring back to you probably in between, if, hopefully this will pass, in two years at the next election cycle, there is another option where we can adopt or take to the voters a new base limit. So the voters could then adopt a base limit. It's a little more complicated, a lot more information to the public. We didn't want to do that because, you know, if it didn't happen, you're in trouble. This is the way we've done it, where the public still has a voice every year that we do our budget. Thought we'd do this and then try that in the off year to see if the public wants to not have these elections every four years.
Mayor brought them.
Thank you. Sort of in concert with Billy. Here again, this is one of those things that, while I understand why the state wants to control everything Prescott does, the people in the City of Prescott chose, a long time ago, long before any of us were here, to be a chartered city. And we're one, I believe, of 19 chartered cities in the state of Arizona. We chose to be a chartered city so that we would have some sort of home rule, so to speak, for the lack of a better definition. So I wholeheartedly support the home rule situation over that of having state rule of the city. That's totally inappropriate for a chartered city, not a town or a city at large.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Go ahead.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi, Council.
This is going to pass.
This is going to pass unanimous. No doubt in my mind. But Mayor, something I wanted to bring up was, out at the airport, you were talking about funding the city, funding the budget, actually. There was two points up there. I don't recall exactly, but you said if we gave up control of those to Phoenix, there was no way we were going to be able to fund our budget here in Prescott.
Yeah, it was construction, sales tax, and residential rental tax.
Exactly. And I think this kind of mirrors what we're talking about here right now. We can't afford to ever give up any sovereignty here in Prescott to Phoenix. That's just inconceivable. But I was really impressed with, I think that gentleman's name was Rob, Jim Rob? Is that his name?
Yeah, Jim Rob, yeah.
Does he work for the city?
Yeah.
He does. Okay, that man's got a lot of enthusiasm. He seems like the right guy at the right time in the right place, too. That was a very impressive presentation, you know? But I think this all ties in together. Looks like it's all, it's all good.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Daniel Mattson again. I just thought I'd point out, where the city staff is not allowed to advocate for this, people such as myself and other people who are very involved in the city, I can't imagine any of us not being in favor of passing home rule. And I definitely agree that we should pressure the legislature to see what can be done to move toward getting rid of this. It's a ridiculous concept. I mean, just totally, absolutely, one of the most absurd things I've ever heard of. So yet again, we need to pass this, and we need to figure out some way to make sure that we get it through to everybody, that there's no way in the world that our city's going to operate reasonably if this does not pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, my turn, right? I'm on the right one, right? I move to close the public hearing. Second. Oh, jeez, thank you.
Yeah, I got a motion and a second. Vote, please.
Okay, Mayor.
No, it's this one. This one here.
Jim. Are you voting no?
No.
Well, you did up there.
Passes unanimously.
No. No, I see that.
And just to clarify, the resolution needs to be adopted at a special meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, we got one more motion here, so.
Right. And it says right here, special meeting, number two. Right. I move to adopt resolution number 4.
We have to wait and adopt that at the special meeting.
Oh, we got to go into the second meeting. Okay.
We'll adjourn this and we'll open up.
Okay. All right. Looks like we got a problem with the computer here, so. Anyway, we're going to adjourn this meeting and have a, open a special meeting to go Day is Tuesday, April 25, 2017. This is a special voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Oberg.
Here.
Mayor Protam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Blair.
Still here.
Councilwoman Lizelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Ohr.
Here.
Councilwoman Shiska.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Okay, for the benefit of the public, can our councillor tell us why this is necessary?
The state law on this issue requires that the ballot language, the resolution to put this matter on the ballot requires a special meeting. That's the terminology in the statute. So it's sort of a formality.
Okay, thank you.
So do we need to move to go into a special meeting? Or, I know that you did it, but do we need to do something special now?
I don't think so. Item C.
Item C1, Adoption of Resolution Number 4379-1588, proposing an extension of the alternative expenditure limitation.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 4379-1588.
Second.
Have motion and second vote, please.
Okay, I have to do a roll call vote on this. So I'll say your name, and you can. Mayor Oberg.
Hi.
Mayor Protam Lamerson.
Hi.
Councilwoman Blair.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lizelle.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ohr.
Aye.
Councilwoman Shiska.
Aye.
And Councilwoman Wilcox.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and read my, my quick founding fathers quote for this meeting. This is from Abraham Lincoln. Nearly all men can stand adversity, but if you want to test a man's character, give him power. Meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming.